Go. And to the state of our citizens on addition under that in this whole with liberty and justice.
As you guys can see, on front of the list, I received ten of the VV pat machines. Not the VV pat machines, ten of the election machines from Jasper County. Free of charge, they were updating and getting new ones. The ones I got from Jasper are newer than the ones that we have, but are the same working components, same working machine. The screen looks a little different, that is it. I would like to put the six of the ten that I received into play. On the list shows where I want to put them into play at during our elections. I want to put two more in Bass Lake, because Bass Lake is an up and growing boat center. They usually always have a line, not usually a wait time, but a line. So I would like to shorten that line even by putting two more machines in there. One more in Coons Lake, one more in Hamlet, one more at Worceston Township, and one more in Sampear. So with the machines, we have to have the VV pads now, it's law, I can't argue with it, it's just the way it is. And with the new cases, it makes it a lot easier, instead of carrying two heavy cases, we got one monstrosity of a case now. That weighs fifty-four pounds. I've received a Hava grant for ten thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents. You can, I have attached a estimate from Microvote, it's the first page, for ten of them, would be thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. My grants for ten thousand one hundred sixteen seventy. So I would need three thousand two hundred and ten dollars and eighty-three cents to put this into play. And the election board approved the plan at our last meeting.
Do you have any vote?
No.
So you need for now?
Yes, my, my suggestion, and it's solely just my suggestion as far as come out of the Kuhn Capital Vision Fund. Development funds.
It was my first thought.
But that's, you know, again, just my thoughts, it's completely up to you.
I'll make the motion to approve the expenditure of three thousand two hundred and ten dollars and eighty-three cents. On the plan presented by Bert to be spent from Kuhn Cap.
Second, on favor.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Now I gotta run, thank you. I'd like to introduce our new director, very excited, and we'll let her tell herself a little about it.
Hi, my name is Mikey Stotlstill, I'm originally from North Manchester, Indiana. So a small town, very much just like Knox. I worked for Congressman Rudy Yachum as his field representative, so I became very familiar with the area. I'd come to spend three times a month, I'd come to your courthouse. Yes, and I also would switch in between North Johnson and North Johnson and Hamlet in your clerk treasurer's office. And then I come to your Stark County Chamber of Breakfast. So I really liked Stark and I got familiar with it that way. And when I was approached to for this job, I immediately was very interested, because Stark is a happening place to me, I think. I think there's a lot of potential here, and I'm super excited for the opportunity to work alongside you guys with development. And here in the next companies, looking at our contract that we have with you guys. And just really moving forward in a brand new direction, and I'm excited for it.
What was your first name?
Mikey.
Mike. Nice to meet you, Don Beck.
Very nice to meet you.
Charlie Chesey. I look forward to working with you all.
Yes.
Got any questions for her?
I don't.
All right, well, she's pretty much.
Looking forward to seeing what we do with economic development under your leadership.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, she'll be kind of getting a little more office hours, she's kind of out and about now, so, but. Yes.
Drive one every day, or you're gonna move this way, you think?
Right now, the travel is not an issue at all, I, I live and work, so it's really like a forty-eight minute drive, really. And that gives one some time to relax.
And it motivates her to be involved with the US thirty stuff.
Yes, yeah, percent, so I'm very excited for you guys. All right, brand new trip, you guys got any questions? It's gonna go good. Colonel, make sure I'll get out. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mikey.
Back in chair.
We haven't had an update on the Safe Haven baby box. So we're coming in front of you today to tell you what's all transpired.
I was wondering, I had seen an article some time ago, but there was a deadline coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And actually, I think that, okay, you hit the deadline, awesome, good.
We made it. I just get on my teeth, but we made it.
Excellent.
So.
I was starting to get worried.
I can, you want me to run through this real quick? Okay, the Safe Haven baby box was picked up in Woodburn, Indiana, which is where their headquarters is, on May twenty-third. And was delivered by Belavita and stored there and built, was going to be installed. I met with Con- Convenant Concrete Construction. On the twenty-second, he gave an estimate, and his was the lowest bid for the ADA sidewalk. Which then on the Tuesday after he met with me, he had poured that. So it went from the parking lot on the north side of the EMT station, all the way to the south side of Byhelfley. The twenty-third, I picked up the building permit from Lonnie from the city. Posted that in the doorway for installation of the baby box. On the twenty-fourth, I met with Amanda Steve from Operation Roundup. She gave me some suggestions as far as how to fill out the application for a grant. Which I did and submitted that for consideration from them. The technology company who does the alarm system was finished on the thirtieth of May. That was accepted by them, and once the box was going to be installed, they were going to set up a date then to set the alarm and get that up and running. That has been done, that was finished on the twenty-eighth of June, which was just last week. The twelfth measurements were taken by Larry Mann, and he installed the Safe Haven baby box on June nineteenth. So that was at least installed, we have signage up that says it is testing, it's still in progress.
Seven days.
Yeah, it has to test for seven days through the alarm company, which will start either today per Jim Garner or tomorrow. And then it'll go seven consecutive days, and then once that's done, I have to send that alarm sheet as well as pictures of the Safe Haven baby box and to the Safe Haven organization. And they will set up a date then for the training of the EMTs. As well as the unveiling and the blessing of the baby box, they'll be on the same day. So that'll be hopefully before the end of July, because I know with Jim being on vacation until the fifteenth now. I want him there for the training, they're going to videotape it so that all the EMTs will get to see that. At one point or another, so whoever can come at the first training, that'll be completed. But he has everything, I've been sharing. Yeah, yeah. Todd Jackson actually painted the handicap lines on the parking spots. He donated his services and his time, as well as Larry Mann, he did the same thing. A donation, we got the signage up by Mark Rippey, he finished that. The one thing that is still waiting on the inside of the box, when you pull down from the inside of the EMT station, it is clear plexiglass, and I had talked with Shelley Sidon up at the fair. And she is going to be doing a vinyl sheeting, this was just one. Yeah, picture that Safe Haven did. But we're gonna do an American flag, and it's not gonna face inside the station, it'll be on the inside of the box. So that when they, if, if a baby is put in the box, they will only see that, they can't see who is dropping it off. So the anonymous, you know, drop-off will be still kept. We got approved for the Operation Roundup grant. So they will be paying for the sidewalk, and they are also paying for the alarm system and one year's worth of fees. We are gonna receive that probably next week, we are in the process of setting up a date to meet with Amanda Steve, and she's gonna turn over the money. We've sent donation letters out to area churches here in Stark County. We are still in the process of doing things as far as family and friends or area businesses. So we are on, on point, we had to get it done by June thirtieth to get our Department of Homeland Security grant. And I did send them the final picture of the baby box that was installed, so they should have that. I sent that last Friday, because I know the thirtieth was Sunday. So I haven't had a chance today to call them to make sure that we will receive those monies. But I will do that tomorrow, and then I will let Sarah know, because that will be going into probably the general fund for you guys. Any questions? Yeah, so we're on, we're on point, and.
We got it done, and we got it, and we made the most of the grant money available, so we're gonna have to further deplete the limited resources we have here in the county.
Yeah. So. I don't know what else you need, but once we do the unveiling and the blessing, I mean, we're gonna have a program, and then we will have that on area, you know, radio stations, and hopefully the TV will come down. All right, any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, my luggage. Let me close it. Hello. All right, so I know, so bear with me a second here. So I am here to address some critical issues regarding our two current solar farm installations. I have reviewed compiled comprehensive binders of documentation, highlighting pretty significant gaps and deficiencies in the permitting oversight and compliance process for all of the projects. So some of the equipment's missing the formal CSCS permit. So according to our solar agreement, we, they're supposed to use the R permit. While our document requires it, we don't actually have one, doesn't mean this doesn't count. The ordinance was written in two thousand nineteen, so there's really no reason we shouldn't have a formal permit by now. The permit form we're using is the same that someone would use to run electric to their garage. Which probably not really all of that acceptable. Additionally, our software only allows us to list one of the parcels on the permit, so we have to do like addendums and separate sheets. Two, absence of required maps, we have no maps of the borings available in our surveyor's office, where they've done the boring under the ditches. Improper use of our road usage agreement, the road usage agreement is in place without a variance to the ordinance. The original ordinance doesn't have, it has its own road usage agreement. We opted to instead do a different road usage agreement, but we never did a variance to the ordinance. And then we're not following suit with that road use agreement. Missing decommissioning bonds, this is a big one, right now, we only have two. We have one for the highway for three million dollars to repair the roads. And then Mammoth has the twenty-five million dollar bond, we do not have a decommissioning bond for next era, doesn't exist. So we have an agreement, and that agreement is not thorough as well, does not list everything that it needs to be agreement. But we've already started our construction, we're halfway through the project, and we have no decommissioning bond. Incomplete project documentation, I always provided all of the documents that are in here on flash drives. But they lack a lot of crucial documents, such as the permit document and the fee for next era's project, I can come back and get that separate. Non-compliance with Rule Five, Rule Five requires a letter of intent and bond with the environmental management company agency, I contacted them, they do not have one on file, nor do they have a letter of intent. Lack of DNR permits, we have no DNR permits for clearing property adjacent to wetlands, and I have that in here as well. Unsigned tax abatements, I've asked about these since last year, we still have unsigned tax abatements, so they remain unsigned. Missing technical committee review documentation, there's no documentation from our technical committee in any of these files when they reviewed the ordinances to allow for the permit. Unreported battery storage, you guys all told us how many times we're not getting it, I've got proof we are. There was an email that was sent to the county, basically saying that our ordinance allows for it, and all of the specs are there for the battery storage. Is included in the email. Let's see, non-compliant UTV usage, so none of the UTVs over in next era have any permits on them or stickers. Lack of enforcement again of the road usage agreement, multiple emails, hundreds of emails from people asking. And we finally did get some, thank you for that, for some folks, that they ran out of the calcium chloride. And we're three weeks from when it was done, and it's already getting dusty again, and a lot of the roads were not completed. Color-coded maps and drawings, most of the drawing specifications and maps that are on our files electronically, they're all scanned in black and white, though they call for color coding to identify various important issues. So they need to be scanned in color. Lack of detailed parcel maps, from my research, we should have detailed maps showing exactly which parcels have solar panels. In the event of a disaster, we should have comprehensive plans, and these maps should be kept with the planning commission, surveyor, EMA, and fire departments. So these deficiencies and non-compliance issues not only undermine the integrity of the permitting process, but they also place our county in significant risk in multiple ways, including potential legal, financial, and environmental repercussions. I'm urging you guys to take action and decisive action to rectify the issues. I'm asking that you begin corrective action on all of the items that are missing and provide an update showing progress in the next thirty days to address the concerns and bring the county's processes into full compliance. If there are no resolutions started in the next thirty days, I'll be compelled to escalate the matter by contacting various state agencies, including the State Board of Counties, Attorney General. Furthermore, I along with others are prepared to pursue a class action lawsuit on behalf of the citizens of the county. We are also asking again, in addition to resolving the existing issues, we place a pause on any additional permits for new solar projects until we have thoroughly addressed and corrected the current deficiencies. This pause is essential to ensure that all existing projects have their eyes dotted and peas crossed before we proceed further. Moreover, given the current state of the ordinance, it is crucial to review and amend it to remove, remove the battery storage language and create a separate battery storage ordinance. This will provide clear guidelines and regulations, ensuring better oversight and compliance moving forward. With that being said, I did create, I've got two separate folders. I will say, I don't know what happened between Mammoth and next era, other than Mammoth seems to be a little more in order, there's less missing. We do not have the CSCS permit app, obviously, because we don't have one as a county. There's no maps of the boring on file at the surveyor's office, the road usage agreement, they do not have, I can't find the three million dollar bond, what's required for that. While we're talking about that, three million dollars is nowhere near enough of a bond to repair the roads out by next era. Just plain simple, if they go belly up, we're in trouble. And then, again, the missing bond for the road usage, I've gone in, I've highlighted, the first page is the ordinance at the time that they received their permits. I've highlighted everything in here for you. Under the permit, I've got everything that is missing, so you can go through and see in Mammoth. We have got no signatures on this, and we don't even have this form for next era. Again, no signatures from the applicant. This was our inspection, it's just like, kind of pretty generic for something the size of our solar ordinance. Decommissioning bond, again, Mammoth, I will say, and I want to call this out, because in their decommissioning agreement and plan, it has everything that's needed, what I mean by everything is it breaks down the cost, it breaks down everything as our ordinance requires, and it has the bond. For next era, the decommissioning agreement is so generic, there's no way you could even figure out how much of a bond it would be. Road usage, again, this is where it talks about the three million dollars that's required, we do not have that bond. The drainage board, this one is actually not too bad, we do have Rule Five for Mammoth. The tax abatement, again, not signed, Justin knows that I've asked about this several times. We're still waiting for the solar companies to sign them, that's been since last year. Here you can see where even our own engineering company that we hired calls out that we have no official application, so just send me the information. In his emails back and forth, he does talk about anything that might have been missing, again, it seems like we got everything in order for that. And then, again, all those black and white maps that are supposed to be color-coded, but we can't see any of them, so that's Mammoth. And then for next era, this one gets much uglier, again, everything is highlighted, our permits are here. The other fields, our permits are very different, again, you can see these are just electrical permits. They don't have all of the parcels, you have to use a separate document for that. These are emails back and forth with Rachel and I, asking again about that EDA agreement and bond. According to this, the impairment states that the bond isn't required until ODM, which makes no sense, considering we got it twenty days after permitting for Mammoth, and the ordinance says that we need to have it before construction starts. Here's the battery storage, so this is where literally next era calls out battery storage system. Please note that we did see in the ordinance that battery storage was included in the definition of a CSCS, just like Jasper County. I would like to suggest that you visit our site, and here is all of the specs for the battery storage compartments and containers that they plan on putting in. Noise levels, this one's a little confusing, because we have a fifty-five DBA, yet it's showing on here that the sound level for each item is well over that, so let's look at that at some point. Missing ordinance and meeting for digging under the ditches and the wetlands. So this is a petition of variance that was requested to dig under all of the ditches in next era. It looks like we never had a meeting. I did contact the attorney for the drainage board, and they said that a petition for variance needs to come in, and that we do in fact need a public meeting, and there was no public meeting. You can see the only public meetings anywhere near the time of this, that they didn't show up, so they pushed it to the next meeting. And then we just went ahead and signed it and let them do it. These are all of the things that are required for any property that is next to a wetland. And as well as all of the things that we would be missing for that. Plane is the second thing, it does look like we may have put panels in floodplains, if we did, again, they require separate permitting. And there is also a map in here for all of the, there's the, all of the wetlands. Again, the EDA agreement. Which, again, you can see here, they're talking about the things that they have not gotten. Territorial engineering, this is final review. You can see all of the missing comments, missing items, and I could not find those things as well in any of our documents, so I'm guessing they never actually got to take care of. Road usage, this was in the file, which I found was interesting, it's Jasper County's road usage agreement, not ours. Rule Five, it's missing, we don't have it. Decommissioning planned, again, we have no bond, no full description, so in comparison, there's no breakdown of the costs, what it's gonna cost to remove anything. The tax abatement. Again, and this is that form that we talked about last year, the F B form, where I believe, Justin, you told me that the one that I had that said no on everything, that there should be ones that say yes, however, still can't find any of the documents that have any of the boxes checked, yes, and even worse, none of them are signed by anybody, they're not signed by us, and they're not signed by the companies. And then these are just all of the planes, again, in black and white. So I am more than happy to leave these with you guys, or you're welcome to do all the reporting yourself. I would just ask that as you go through and correct things, that you put in the new document and leave it there. So that I don't have to go back there and mark everything again. So with that, what questions do you guys have for me? This is just my little speech, but yeah, I can, and all of it's on here, too, each folder has everything that's. Yep, everything is here and listed on. So what questions do you guys have for me? Thoughts?
I have no question, but I'm not taking a thirty day, I'll give you, I don't, thirty to you see what's in there.
Oh, I know, and I do this in a week. Well, I'm not asking for all of it to be completed, I'm asking to see progress in thirty days, so to see that something is being done to start aggressive. And until we get this done, how do you guys feel about holding on any new permits? I know we don't have any right now.
It's a serious matter, we don't have complete stuff, I mean, that's not how the ordinance should work.
I mean, we're putting the county at risk, the citizens at risk, including those people that are leasing their land, I mean, there is a risk at this point, because we don't have everything signed and that, we might not like we should.
It's, you know, between the company and the county, it's a, it's an issue.
And there are also in that one, in the very back, there's leases that have mortgages that have been placed on them from the first one. Which I know is not illegal, they can do it, I just didn't include those. So I appreciate you starting to work on it, how do you guys feel about reviewing and removing that battery piece? I mean, I know you got, you said you were, you didn't want battery storage. Charles, I know you didn't want it, I don't remember what you're, etc. in that meeting, but right now, as the ordinance reads, read, CSCS includes battery storage. So there is nothing we can do to stop battery storage in our county on these permits, unless we treat them as separate ordinance, which we really need to do. I mean, I know we have other projects in the works, but I think that we can take, you know, thirty or sixty days to get separate that ordinance, it's not a huge, it's not a huge deal to make some pretty small changes to the ordinance to, and then just work on a separate battery storage ordinance.
Any change to the ordinance is at least a three-month process. Given that it has, has to go through the plan commission process, which is a meeting, a public hearing, and then perhaps no, it's probably done the same day, send it up to us, and then the bigger process is for re-ratings. I don't know if we'd have to do a separate hearing, since that could save you care of the plan condition level, but I mean, we do, I mean, the normal process to pass any ordinance is. Three to second readings.
But I'm not gonna.
No, and I, you guys need time to review everything, so I understand that. Um, knowing that it would take that long for the ordinances, again, I'm going to ask, and we pause. On permits, even if it's just for ninety days, while we get all of our ducks in a row and actually create a permit, because we don't even have that. I mean, that would be one of the asks, again, and, you know, we asked for a review of all these things before. That was shot down, I understand the time, but now, we're not even following suit with our. So I will give you guys some time, obviously, to discuss, you know, with yourselves as well, I don't expect you to be around the spot. But I am going to ask again for a temporary moratorium while we get battery removed from it. While we get our existing projects up to par. So that's all I have, any questions?
I just, uh, I know Bo's a mayor, you're back there, what do you guys think we can get stuff worked on pretty quick with this, or? Get stuff that's missing and figured out?
As far as the batteries, that's, that's all going into state, you know, with um.
There, it has to be a certain way. If that's already.
You know, it's just like solar stuff, it's, state has theirs, I mean, county would have theirs, so.
As far as the permit application. I did provide Roberto today, copies of both of those, and I mean. In her opinion. They're not acceptable. But those are the current applications that we do in the office, there's no way for us. In our system to put in all the information like she's thinking it needs. Um, that system, it only allows for one parcel to be put in. That's why risks of the parcel are included on our permit. I mean.
Yeah, and I did say that, but it can't be made, I just think we can.
A generator comment goes on that same application. And that's just a difference of opinion in my opinion. What she thinks was suitable for that process and what isn't. Now, that's what the planning permission decided on those. For beautifully, how they can. Um, and as far as all those stuff that's missing, um, I wasn't at any of those tech committee meetings. And that's the tech committee's job to make sure that all of those things are in place before they send it for approval of the planning permission. And so when they send it for approval for the planning permission, it should have got all that stuff with it.
Those are the tech committee meetings that I was talking about, they're just, we don't have them. So are they here somewhere in box? I don't know, I mean, I can't answer that. But, I mean, Mary, Mary's been great, by the way, she gave me everything that she had, she explained all that permit, I understand what she's saying, which is that we don't have one. But again, we state clearly in our ordinance that they have to use our CSES permits. Our forms for that, yet we never created a.
And our law for though. And this is what she doesn't realize. When those come in, they are listed as a commercial solar installation. Okay, the form she got is just, it's called a letter that gets printed up. She does not see the entire application process. That we see on it in here, so when I pull that up, it does say that it's a commercial solar installation. Okay, on what she has, yeah, it says it on that form on there. I mean, it's, you know.
Is there a way, would you have the?
I mean, that's what I asked for, yeah. I mean, and it's not.
It's not, it's, that's just like a screenshot, basically. It's not like. The letter, but actually, it's not the application.
Well, then we need to see what that looks like. So I mean, there's got to be a way to print that out of the software.
I mean, I mean, I can print those, but it's not, I mean, you're getting, like, those have all of, like, the inspection. Or conversations of both of them, so.
And again, I mean, I'm not the only one confused by it, I just want to call that out, and again, this isn't on Mary, because it's not her. You know, it's not her fault with the software, it will not do, but again, even Bob calls out that we don't have a permit application. So instead, he took our ordinance on his own, which is what the permit application should do, and he created each item. And then made comments and checkboxes to say when it was done. That's what most permits look like, and I get it, as a county, we don't have that, but again, as a county, we weren't working with companies the size of these solar companies. So if we're going to start doing business, we need to be able to do business in a little more professional manner, because right now, we've heard you guys say a million times. You know, oh, we can't do that, we could get sued, well, right now, we got nothing. Like, they, they absolutely could sue us, they could not pay us right now. They could say, damn, you're not getting that check in January, because I never signed the abatements, I never signed the agreement. And I know we're all going to say, well, they would never do that, maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't, I don't know, but we have no way to protect ourselves. And that's unacceptable.
No, nothing. Not what I know. Appreciate you putting this together.
Absolutely, like I said, I'll leave that with you guys, so you can review it. But, I mean, we've definitely got to do better, and I'd like to come back at the next meeting and just see where we're at and. Um, get an idea of your thoughts again on the closing on any additional permits until we get this in place, and then. Okay, absolutely, always, yep, all right, thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Hi. Here again, seeing where we are, what we can do with, uh, quote, replacing. Some of the locks over at the jail. Uh, not all of the locks, it is for. Twenty-two locks, these are all the ones that use the card reader over at the jail.
Right now, and I've asked, come back, we're trying to table again. Uh, like you said, it will need a standing lock.
I tried to reach out to them today, a little bit after we talked earlier today.
Day chairman. Our time in black, on black.
Tony's been pretty involved. I understand that power is built up.
To the board appointments.
Maybe hold on, because I don't know. This person, do you know?
I don't know. I mean, I give, I'm standing down there.
Yeah. I, I just, I just like, would like to know who this is, who's representing us before we make the formal appointment. I don't, well, I don't see anybody I don't recognize.
For the hospital board. For January.
And we have two appointments, or just, just one? Make the motion to appoint Dr. Brown to the hospital board. So that's within that contract, we, the, the overall. Search and general contract, do we have them in place?
These can't get through right now, but these. I've the most. That payroll claim, uh, they're down for what we can. Motion to accept the claim of a, a own fifty-six, running seventy-five eighty-eight. So no, second. Motion to accept the minute for. You have some, some, like second. Motion, they accept the minute for May twentieth. And that will be joint me.
No.
I like the motion that we have, uh, Sarah, uh, Dean Institute, uh, Chief Deputy Auditor. Second, on favor. Okay. Got any?
I'm good.
Yeah, of course I do, Don.
Okay, go ahead.
We had a brief conversation, thanks. This has been talked before in several commissioner beings and council, and probably part for beings as well. Just. Just want to assure that all the money that comes from that park is deposited or somehow. Every day, I mean, I don't know, talking with Lori, it sounds like this box audio is not adequate, and to put cash in, and I, I get that. And then if we deposit the bank, you would have to go retrieve it to do a quiet, correct? So. Do we, do we need to look at an option?
If we need a decision tonight, I'd say the, the bank.
Then there is no. It's, it's done.
Because if we do something there, it's going to take months, you know, two months or longer.
Right. I'm, I'm just trying to, I know we all want to talk about transparency, and we want to make sure that everything is accounted for, and we've been down the road for, for months, we talked about it. And that's, um, I just want to make sure that if it's done.
We have a procedure in place when we approved the positions to, um, for those gate. Or, those folks at the gate collecting the fees. Um, we're still adhering to that, at least, correct?
And we got cash ready.
All right, yeah, so I mean, there's a way, there's a way in place, we've, we've made great progress. I mean, but it'd be nice if we could, like, finish it.
Right.
Just Lord's hands take, take, take to everybody.
Or would you contact? See if that's possible, and get back from that. We'll try to get going quick, Todd.
Okay, I just think it's important.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, that's all I have.
You guys got any?
Yeah, I got a question for you, I love the Ford Fast Lake, not on the lake. And there's over a thousand households around the lake there, and I was wondering if you guys know where to start. If we could check into getting a weather side down there, because we have no way to get storm warnings except for a weather radio. Phones don't work good when it's nice weather out. You know, and radio, once the static starts with a thunderstorm, that radio is almost unusable. And it would be nice, maybe, to have like a tornado side down there, and I know FEMA gives out grants for it. And I was just wondering, maybe you guys could check into doing something like that.
You sure want fire stations?
Yeah, but you'll never hear that, by the way. But there's a thousand families down there, and I understand.
I'll talk to our EMA director.
Okay.
Martin, and uh, see what we can do, or what grant out there and do that.
That's all I can ask for.
Where are you thinking, you wanting it in there?
It's also be like on the east side of the lake, because.
First, you probably have to go where it's coming property, right?
Right.
So maybe. I'll look into, okay, thank you, yep. I'm sure your name, sorry.
Uh, Nick Barb connected with you, who's your seller, we're just going through the last final neighborhood conversations. Uh, our neighborhood agreements and formulae, where our projects will be decided. And then after that point, definitely having a little public transparent, old houses, you'll see through Facebook or newspaper ads and all of that.
No, not people, thank you. Well, I just was hoping that we could get a more time for a couple of months at least, you know, we're getting this stuff done, but. Nobody, um, offered up one. So I did, we just see what, with all that stuff, it's to be careful, something that was pretty. Concerning.
Anyway, we are going to look into.
And we're still, they're going to be accepting other ones, I don't know, who knows what. You know, those were just for Mammoth and Next Era. So I don't know.
We are looking into.
I know. I appreciate it.
Anything else? Darren, sir.
I'll just say that, to Sandy's point, I, I'm the one that told you guys to take a couple of weeks to consider the moratorium. And I feel that's fair for you guys to have a chance to discuss it, look at everything. I personally would rather you guys do a little bit of work, so I'll be back in two weeks with that, so Sandy, that's. I don't know if you can hear very well when I're out there, but I did tell them to take a couple of weeks and I'll come back. So, I, I prefer that you guys do your homework before any, you sign or do anything, so I didn't present, you know, these to you guys before tonight, so.
No. About the lady besides.
Oh, I do have a question for the, uh, who's your seller? You talked about good neighbors.
Yes, ma'am.
Unless. That is no longer a though. While we leave there is. A site that's going in that we're giving business to my father.
I'll be getting my third and we'll talk about it. There's a, there's some parcels we may not be utilizing.
And maybe that might be.
Yeah. And, uh, we'll look at a map and, and before we go to permitting, you know, the public will see all of our maps that we are utilizing so that they can confirm whether they are.
Well, I can tell you where it's on.
I'll look, we'll look at a map after this. Sir.
Uh, yes. My name is Patrick McKee. And I, I'm S N. Yeah. Thank you.
Good to see you first.
Thank you.
I'll call you back Friday. Your voicemail was.
I have terrible reception out there and we've been working nonstop trying to get it to. We had a lot of goals at this point and, um, I purchased, uh, six parcels in, in total and, um. So approximately two years ago, I spoke with someone else who, um, and got a Dollar General installed and, and, uh. So we really looked into it and spoke with them and came up with a contract to, uh, actually we were supposed to close six months ago. And our grand opening was supposed to be this weekend. And Bose, uh, actually I seen him at the fair and I said, uh, are we waiting just on an in dock permit? And he said, no, actually we, uh, we just decided we red flagged it and we sent it on downstate. And I said, well, why did you red flag it? And he said, well, perimeter draining. So he told me this at the fair last Tuesday. So he said perimeter draining and I just, I couldn't quite understand that, you know, so, uh. The surveyor and Bose, surveyor Bose and Mike Gearhart with the health department, they came out on Thursday and. You know, they got out of their new trucks and, and, uh. Mike was like, well, you know, we had ready to see the small plan and I, I didn't quite understand that, but, uh. I, I couldn't understand that the very first time they stepped foot on that property. Was to tell me they'd already red flagged it and sent it downstate. They didn't come out one time, not a phone call or nothing. No communication at all, no effort at all to try to successfully bring this, uh, store to total. And so I was, uh, I, I'm just a little confused by it all. So here we are supposed to have a grand opening this weekend and now they just come out with this. Well, the surveyor come out, he said he had already approved it. He said he had no problem because of the elevation levels. So he didn't even understand why they red flagged it. And, uh. So once they come out and we went around perimeter and I showed them where there's been a drain there for a hundred years from the rail bed. And it goes all the way under and, and then they started trying to find reasons that that wouldn't have worked and that. Like you've never even been out here yet. You've already red flagged it, sent it downstate. And now you're basically out here telling me that, sorry, we didn't approve your land. And I, I just can't understand that.
Other words, there's basically no communication.
Zero. None. I mean, that was a million dollar job, a store that would have. Been so beneficial to total. There's people asking me every day, when's it coming? When's it coming? And.
I checked in, do both of them state.
Bose, I actually talked to the engineer and the, I talked to, I think I gave, did I give you the number of the engineer?
You get me the number of the engineer.
Yeah, they've been waiting to close six months ago. We were supposed to begin construction three months ago and be closing and a grand opening this weekend. And. All of a sudden here comes Mike and Bose with, uh, a perimeter drainage issue. So I, I don't have. I, I don't know if, if we can get it amended that, that the perimeter drainage sample and that they will, uh, amend it and send an amend down so that way while it's in review of the state, we can get that. It just, uh, changed.
Cause I would assume it's since, it's that, yeah, I, I was looking into it, trying to familiarize myself with this process because I. Haven't been a participant in this particular process. We have people for that. Um, I don't, um. I. I don't quite fully grasp, uh, the language you're using, uh, pertaining to red flagging it. Um, because. As I, in my conversation with Mike, it's, it's more of a, a pass along through his office to the state.
I don't know.
And it's the state, and it's the state that comes back, especially. I can't remember if that legislation died or if it went through. There was something pertaining to septic inspections that was at State House. This spring, but I can't remember what happened to it. Um, but anyway, the, the next step is hearing back from the state probably middle of the month. Um, I, beyond that.
Is, is it protocol that the planning commissioner doesn't go to the job sites anymore? Ever? I mean, it's a. It's not at all.
From, it should have been out there. He's usually had other sites.
Well, I mean, I, I just, in the past, I've always. Thought that the planning commissioner comes and works with you and shows you. He, he, oh, he, he said that Thursday, that that was the first they've been out there. They showed me the map that they went off of. It was a. It wasn't even a topographical map. It was, it was just a line, a couple of boundaries. He said, we've looked at this and. We don't see anywhere you can run your perimeter draining, but, cause just in case that five hundred year flood. If that overflow pond. Goes over its banks, it's gonna have nowhere to go. And Mike's, or the surveyor Tom said, actually at the elevation levels. Ninety-five percent of the county would be underwater if this flooded here. So.
If that. Your septic got none due to.
No, but he's talking elevation levels and for drainage of, you know.
Yeah.
He did, because they're backing up.
The set, yeah, that's part of the, part of the deal is they have to have a. Plan for our drain like that for an overflow problem.
Yeah.
Um, just like, just like why they put the retention pond in in front of the Dollar General there at eight and twenty-three.
But. I, I just don't understand how you can red flag something and, and you never stepped foot or walked or looked at anything out there. And. There's been a, there's a three foot culvert going and underneath that rail bed that goes out to the other side and, and. And he said, well, you're gonna have to get the other. Landowner's permission on the other side. And I just didn't even say nothing to him, but he don't even, he's never even looked at a map to see that I own the other side too. So there was no reason that this held up six months. It's supposed to be open in this weekend. We haven't even been approved yet. And not a phone call, not a visit. It, it just don't sit well.
What?
It's, it's, it's hurt us bad. And, you know, I don't know whether ask us for amendment, how, how can we get this changed and, you know, send downstate to where. Hopefully then it gets approved and expedited and gets done as quick as possible because.
It's in their hands. They've flagged already. It just takes action. But I mean, I, I, I don't know. I mean. Aside from the building inspector, you know, reaching out and asking if you can amend the, uh.
But I couldn't believe he left, actually.
Yeah.
I thought they would be here to explain.
Only thing I can propose is contact the memory sent down. Ask if you can amend it, but short of that, it's already in the hands. Sometimes it takes a position. Sorry, they're reporting. You know, they have to come to a resolution. So, you know, something that I would talk that there is about.
Hey, I don't understand how you can red flag something if you never walked it. You never walked the land.
Yeah, well, I mean. Could you and should you are two different.
Every, every single job site is visited by the planning.
Can you red flag? Oh, yes. Without saying, but should you, what I mean.
Why would you wait six months and then just?
We can hypothetically, what the death rate.
No, there's, it's. At minimal, it's there like a ditty.
Soil test done for septic and all that.
No, everything was done. And Mike was going off the worst, uh. He, he said you were getting, uh. Water three inches down, but that was the soil that was closest to the road where the ditches. And they know that actually there's gonna be a. Uh, you know, if we end up building it, but a benefit to them because we can still run a drain tile there, then that will go all the way around to the retention pond. It's actually got drink, great drainage. I'm waiting to see when another surveyor comes out. Then we're gonna integrate that. Into a map to show that we have perimeter draining. So that way there's no complaints, but by waiting six months like this, it's almost killed my contract. And I'm, you know, I know there's, there's one wolf right now. That's, that's the whole point of this whole thing is trying to steal the contract. I just, I would like to be successful, get it amended and, and be successful in completing what I set out to do.
We'll check into tomorrow, boy, and then you can, you're welcome to call me. You got an amount.
Thank you, sir. If he can just amend it and if we get done with this, I do not want to think or talk about it anymore. I would hope that everything is successful because I, I, I was telling him, you know, uh. You know, we bought the plumber as well. So everything is just a flange budget, flange for waves. We're waiting on this because. Uh, we work with good oil. We're gonna bring a gas station to, uh, total as well. So, you know, um. That's, I, I, is it more small, is it organizations that help small business and start counting?
No, not, nothing.
Is that the young lady that walked out the floor is about it?
Um. Yeah, but even what she does is not as tailored. There's, we used to have a, a small business administration, or small business assistance office for that one.
Isn't that what they moved the depot down there? Is that what in the depot?
No, that's the chamber of commerce. Um, the small business stuff just went away, um, when we cut. Uh, our appropriation to. Economic development and they cut. The, that part that Ron Differed was running for small businesses.
Was it having any success? I mean, was it helping?
Wasn't seeing the use.
No.
Yeah.
Well, sadly, we, we need to be bringing more small businesses in because I mean. Well, indicators, when you go to a community and you see what they have, and then you come back home and you look around, it's like, wow, there's so much opportunity, potential. And you know what? Nobody's investing in money. Nobody knows how to get grants, business loans. There's, there's really nothing to help out there. And, and I've, I feel like I'm an island doing all this because I really don't. You know, usually somebody works with my hands and he's putting in ten, twelve hours a day.
And I'm surprised it's you that's coming to the force because when they built the, the store there at, uh. Thirty-five and. On the road back two hundred south.
Two hundred.
Just on the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it wasn't the, uh, the landowners. It wasn't the one that interacted with us. It was the developer.
Right.
I'm not, that strikes me as odd that you have to do this.
Yeah.
Work yourself and you don't have your, your developer.
I know. I don't even. I'm, I'm working with the engineer from the project. She's waiting right. Right now and, uh, basically I've dealt with, it's, it's through a, a realtor of the company that contracts. He does all their, their building and, you know, it. And as, as Buzz has said, don't you think there's enough Dollar Generalism serving out?
So do matter.
Well, it's, it's, uh, you know, total doesn't have nothing. You know, another question we have out in total is, is, you know, since the post office closed. And tax money from one side is going to Johnson and tax money the other side comes to Oxford. They shut our street light off there at the four wave. They were charging debt in sixty dollars a month for the street light. Now. You're telling us that the taxpayers in total don't pay enough for one street light. Not, we don't get eight dyed. And, and honestly, I'd like to propose at least like sidewalks and some lamp posts and do something to try to, uh. I mean, but that's all down the road. I, I just would really like to discuss this now and see if we can be successful. I, I grateful for all your.
Two days. Give it just the time, get up.
Yes.
If you get all about it, or you call me. You don't care for me two days long.
I'm sorry. It's been just long to bring this attention. I just. We're trying. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra.